Good evening. This is Harold Watson, zoning chair of the Stratford Zoning Commission that now sits for its regular live monthly meeting on Wednesday, August 24th, 2022. The quorum for this meeting is four, and I will now call on the following elected commissioners. Zone one Commissioner James Vigliotti.
Here.
Zone two Commissioner Dion Francis.
Here.
Zone three Commissioner, myself Harold Watson here. Zone four Commissioner Deborah Lamberty. And zone five Commissioner Len Pettercelli, who is absent today. Sitting in his place is our alternate Chris Sahave, who's here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman.
We also welcome Jay Hibansky, our Planning and Zoning Administrator, Gail DeCilio, our Recording Secretary, Patricia Sullivan, our Legal Counsel. The public may only speak at the invitation of the Chair during both administrative and public hearings. Please text -- oh, we're not doing that, sorry. With that said, I call to order this monthly session of the Stratford Zoning Commission at 7:00 PM. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We will now open our petitioner's public meeting hearing.
Mr. Chairman, Agenda item number one, text amendment petition of the town of the Stratford Zoning Commission seeking to modify statute 15B point four to limit the number of cannabis retailers.
Is there anybody here to speak on this?
That would be myself, Mr. Chairman Jay Hibansky.
Okay.
Planning and zoning administrator. So, thank you. The intent to this text amendment before you tonight, and as we discussed at our last meeting, was, you know, when this zoning commission adopted the adult-use cannabis regulations back in earlier this year, the state legislature had limited the number of potential adult-use cannabis retailers to one for every 25,000 residents. As this commission deliberated as to whether or not the town would allow for adult-use retailers, they all -- this commission ultimately decided that they would approve the text amendment to allow these adult-use cannabis retailers with the understanding that there would be a maximum of two, one for every 25,000, and we have approximately 52,000 residents here in Stratford. So with some informal discussion at our last meeting, the commission felt that it was appropriate to present, or at least include, some limitations to honor the original decision that was made by this commission to limit the number of cannabis retailers to one for every 25,000 residents and essentially honor your initial adoption of these regulations. This application was referred to the Stratford Planning Commission, which gave a favorable recommendation for adoption of this text amendment at their administrative meeting on August 16th, 2022. The reason for their approval, the subject request is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Town Plan of Conservation and Development, and to simplify the zoning code to increase its usefulness and understandability. This application was also referred to the Greater Bridgeport Regional Council, or I'm sorry, MetroCog, that's what they're called now, and sent to the other municipalities within our region. We received no feedback or commentary from any of the other agencies that would typically respond. So I would turn this back to the commission if you have any questions for me. Thank you.
I -- this is exactly what we discussed at previous meetings, so we're really moving forward with what we had instructed Jay to move forward to. Happy to hear that MetroCog did not have any comments. And also remember, what we are doing here can always be changed in the future, but it was what we think will let us move forward in a very measured way. Any comments from any of our committee members? Any questions for Jay? Then I think that's what I was going to do. Is there anyone here in favor of this, would like to speak? Seeing none. Is there anybody here in opposition to this? Seeing none. I need a motion to close.
Commissioner Francis here, motion to close text amendment to petition of seeking the modification of section 15B dot four to limit the number of cannabis retailers.
Jay, are we voting on this now? We're voting on this administratively, correct?
During the administrative session.
So all we're doing right now is putting it on the table.
Oh.
We're closing it. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Okay, now we're going to our next text amendment, I mean, our next amendment. Again, I do believe -- who wants to read number two?
Number two text amendment, petition of Stratford Zoning Commission seeking to modify section 17 point one regarding enforcement and criminal enforcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jay Hibansky from the Office of Planning and Zoning. This was also discussed informally at our last meeting, and it was something, you know, every year we send staff to different training events and continued education opportunities, and staff came back from their training and brought to my attention some possible concern for some of the language in section 17 point one, which essentially discusses how my office will pursue enforcement. And it essentially says, "The Planning and Zoning Administrator," which is myself, "has the authority to conduct inspections, to issue cease and desist orders, to take people to court, and all the stuff that we would typically do during the enforcement process." Staff felt that it was important to elaborate a bit with the language and include, instead of it just being "the administrator," it should say "or the administrator's designee," so that it covers all staff in the event that we take an individual or an entity to court, and they say, "Well, section 17 point one says the letter needs to come from the zoning, Planning and Zoning Administrator." This will essentially close that potential loophole. So, you know, I support this application. I think that if anything, it takes out any ambiguity in the enforcement process. This application, similar to the last text amendment, was referred out to all the statutorily required agencies. On May 17th, 2022, the Stratford Planning Commission gave a favorable recommendation to the zoning commission for approval and adoption of this text amendment with the reason being, "The subject request is consistent with the goals and objectives of the Town Plan of Conservation and Development, and will simplify the zoning code and increase its usefulness and understandability." We received comments from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, from Jamie Sidoriak, in her memo to me on May 16th, 2022, "Thank you for referring the above referenced application for our review for consistency with the standards and policies of the Connecticut Coastal Management Act and the Connecticut General Statute, section 22A dash 90 through 22A dash 112 inclusive." I have no comments for the proposal for the commissioners at this time. We -- those were the only staff comments that we received regarding this application, and I recommend this application be approved, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Can I just ask you a question? Who might be possible administrative designees?
So, my designee would be essentially who I have hired in their position. So typically, it would be the zoning enforcement officer will approve permits, deny them, go represent the town in court when individuals feel that they have been righted or wronged, I should say, potentially the town planner in the absence of myself, or the zoning enforcement officer. If there was ever an emergency, both of us are out sick, and a cease and desist order needs to be issued immediately, the town planner would be able to issue that letter on behalf of the town without wasting valuable time. So Planning and Zoning Administrator, Town Planner, Zoning Enforcement Officer, but I would say 99% of all enforcement action and letters come from the zoning enforcement officer at my direction.
To the extent of what you're saying, that's my view of the comment. Any comments?
Just to correct me if I'm wrong, so if he is, as you said, it's about 99% of the time, he'll be handing, he'll be the first contact for any violations or such, you know, fines, or he'll be the first step of contact, but 99% of the time. The other times, the other two that you mentioned would be the backups, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anybody else? Do you have a question?
Jay? And Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
There is one thing that I wanted to mention for both applications, but I'll state it now, both text amendment applications. If the commission feels that they are going to be voting favorably on these applications, a condition that I would recommend that you all attach would be that the text amendments become effective at the expiration of the appeal period, which is 15 days from the date of publication. The reason I don't have an exact date is because sometimes that date of publication can change when we put it in the paper, so.
So we can cover that in our administrative?
We would cover that. I just wanted to make sure that that was part of the public hearing, and then the reason why we feel these applications both should be approved, as stated by the Planning Commission, is that they are consistent with the plan of conservation.
When we get to the administrative session, whoever does that, please make sure you include that.
Did you write it down already?
And I'll remind.
Are there any comments from our public here in favor of this? Seeing none. Are there any comments against these proposals? I don't hear either. Hearing none, a motion is in order to close.
Mr. Chairman, hearing no opportunity, or no one taking opportunity for public comment, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Oh, we need a second, sorry.
Second, Mr. Commissioner Francis.
All in favor?
Aye.
So it's five zero. Thank you. Now we're going on to our next one. Let me, do I have to bring these up, or can I simply say that they're deferred?
You can just mention, the first application is deferred, the second one is.
Okay, the next two applications on our scheduled agenda for tonight, 1325, 1345 Barnum Avenue, has been deferred to a later date. They need to make changes in what they're going to present to us. The 50 Husatonic, number four, petition of Stratford LLC has been withdrawn. They need to redo their everything based on what they've received from the DEP. So both of those are not on our agenda for tonight. We now are going to move down to number five.
No.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 3550 to 3552 Main Street, petition of Katerzina Lindenberg, seeking an approval of liquor location to establish a Class H beer and wine permit incidental to a restaurant in a C.A. zone.
I see the petitions are present. If you had certificates of mailing for any of your neighbors, could you please pass them around here and let me give them to the secretary?
Mr. Chairman, we do have a copy of those.
We do. Okay, fine. We're okay then. Do you want copies of those?
No.
Okay. You may proceed.
Hi, I'm Sarah Ambrose, and this is my business partner, Kasia, and we are proposing to serve beer and wine in our location located at 3552 Main Street, and we have a tea room there. So we serve lots of healthy lunches, we have salads and sandwiches and quiches, and we're hoping to expand our offerings a little bit by offering wine to go with our relaxation. Our motto is Oasis in a Cup, so we hope to kind of expand on that a little bit, as well as offer beer and wine at private events.
So we would extend the hours till six, but as we have also open events to the public, like poetry night and theater, we're hoping to serve the wine also until it goes. Usually the latest would be at 10 o'clock.
That's, that's, that's the end of your presentation?
That is our presentation, yes.
Could we ask a couple of questions here? Commissioners?
Yes, could you just repeat, you said, what kind of a shop was it?
It's a tea room.
It's a tea room?
Yes, so we have a very large selection, over 100 varieties of loose-leaf teas, and then we also serve small plates like salad, sandwiches, and then we have baked, in-house baked goods, like cakes and scones and muffins.
And you have poetry night there also?
Yes.
And that's your designated time to, any kind of events you plan on having at 10 o'clock is pretty much your cutoff?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Jim, Deborah, Chris, any questions?
Nothing, really, I mean, just as a statement, I know that there's, I'm familiar with your restaurant, you know, and I know there's a few other restaurants in the green that have, you know, that probably serve liquor. I'm assuming the Chinese restaurant down there does. I'm not sure if there's been any incidents in any other that you're aware of in the green with beer or wine being sold, anything that you're aware of?
None that we're aware of, no.
Our landlord, who runs Paradise Pizza Restaurant.
Okay, yep.
Sitting dog, they have alcohol. But we also not having a bar situation, it's just mostly glass of wine together with the meal, and hoping to expand to a brunch menu, then we would like to have mimosa with that.
Okay, so you'll be, there's, it'll be like a service bar someplace else. It's not like a regular sit-down bar. You're going to serve it, you'll store it someplace other than in a typical bar situation?
Right, so on our floor plan, we do have a bar, but it's more so for tea tastings. We do a lot of tea education and tea events, so that, what you see on the floor plan is, we're calling it a tea bar. We're not necessarily having like a full-service bar in that area. So we'll have a service, separate service bar area.
So over on the right-hand side of the room, there's like five seats?
Right, exactly, yeah.
And it says liquor storage, so.
Right, we will have a storage there, just because it is a small space, but it won't necessarily be like a bar, a full-service bar.
Okay. Thank you.
Looking at the plans, are you guys expanding a little bit with what you're doing there?
Yes, I forgot to mention that. We did sign a lease to go into the office space next door at 3550. So we've been at 3552 Main Street for six years, almost six years next month, and we signed a lease to expand our dining area and also our kitchen. So we hope to open that area at the end of September.
Any other questions?
Yes, so are you going to have like an outdoor area that you have seating and serving out there also, or is it just mainly indoors?
So we currently, I mean, we have three tables outside currently for patio seating, and then we'll have another three in the new space, outside of the new storefront, outside of 3550, and we would file for the patio extension to serve wine out there as well.
Okay, and approximately, you said, how many seats was it? I'm sorry.
Outside?
Yes.
So it would be about 10 to 12 seats outside.
Okay, thank you.
So Jay confirms that that does fall within our current regulations, so good to hear, good to hear that. I guess now we're going to move on to the audience. If you've presented everything, is there anybody here who would like to speak in favor of this petition? Hearing no one, is there anybody who would like to speak in opposition to this position? Hearing no one, I'll take a motion to close. I need someone to second it. Deborah? All in favor?
Aye.
So now we're ready to close. Stick around, because we will discuss this during the administrative meeting, which should be coming up. I now would like to have a motion to close the.
Mr. Chairman, seeing no more items on our agenda for our public hearing, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Before we do that, I'd just like to make one comment. The petitions this evening were advertised in the Connecticut Post. I forgot to include that in my statements. Now we'll go on with what you were saying, Jim.
Mr. Chairman, seeing no more items on our agenda for the public hearing, I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Someone second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Okay, now we are going to move on to our administrative hearing. I need someone to approve the minutes of, well, do I have to open the?
Not yet.
What?
Don't go to our.
We go directly to our?
Yeah, and then after that.
So what we now need to do is our administrative hearing on today's petitions. The first one, will someone give me a vote to take it off the table?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to take petition for Stratford Zoning Commission seeking to modify 15B point four to limit the number of cannabis retailers off the table.
Someone second?
For discussion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so I think what Jay laid out for us is pretty clear, what we're looking to do, and I think he's done what we asked him to do. So I'm, we'll open this up for any other discussion, but I don't think we need to discuss it too much.
I ask this, I think that we're, you know, we're in the bounds in, under the protocol that's given to us, I guess, with the total limit, limited amount of cannabis dispensaries or the stores there is.
They're calling them retailers.
Okay, retailers, and with the population of the 52,000, I think we're within that number, so I think it's a good idea. I think Jay's did a wonderful job in following through with getting all the information and putting it out there for us to make this decision.
And I think it's a conservative choice, if I could just comment on this, it moves us forward with the rest of the world, but it gives us a little bit of control on the floodgates. So we'll have two stores with experience and what kind of impact that has on Stratford before we can say, okay, let's open them further. So I think that I'm very supportive of what Jay has done here, and I think it makes sense, and it seems like so is the state and so is MetroCog. So any other comments from anybody?
I was just going to question, I wasn't sure what our population was, if it was, I knew we were around 50,000. I wasn't sure if we were a little bit under or a little bit over, but we had to check.
With 25 and 25, it gives us two.
Yeah, it gives you two.
We're following that.
Yeah.
Because we'd already put it in before they changed the law in the last session.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Will someone give me a?
Mr. Chairman.
Stop. Remember what Jay had asked you to include.
And if you'd like me to repeat that, I'm happy to do so.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the text amendment because it helps to, it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development, and it is consistent with simplifying the zoning code to increase its usefulness and understandability. And I think we should approve it on the condition that the amendment becomes effective at the expiration of the.
Appeal period.
Appeal period.
Someone second that?
I second that.
Okay, all in favor? Are you willing to discuss, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So it's five zero. Let's now go back to text number two.
Mr. Chairman, I make to motion to take off the table text amendment to petition of the Stratford Zoning Commission seeking to modify section 17 point one regarding enforcement and criminal enforcement.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, discussion. Yes, Deborah?
No, no, no.
Oh, you're ready to vote on it? Okay. All right. Okay, so is there discussion? Anybody want to comment?
I also agree with Jay by implementing the administrative designee, because it actually gives somebody a point of contact, and actually gives, you know, also opportunities if that point of contact is not there for other options, so there's always somebody there to uphold some of these protocols and these laws we put in place.
My assumption is part, one of the reasons we're doing this is because there has been legal problems, so now we have clear-cut, anybody who comes in the door, there are three people basically who have the legal permission to speak for planning and zoning, correct?
Correct.
That should alleviate one other possible source of lawsuits. Any other comments? Chris?
I was just going to say, Mr. Chairman, it's a common sense amendment to the regulations. It makes sense for continuity purposes to make sure that, should the administrator be away, that there's no question and no break in the chain of command for those types of issues, so I recommend approval.
Anybody second that?
I second that.
Okay, I was just suggesting approval, but if you want to consider a motion, I will say that it become effective at the expiration of the appeal period, and that it is being done because it's in conformance with the plan of conservation and development, and simplifies our zoning code, and makes a clear delineation of responsibilities.
Well done.
Thank you. See, getting the rest off.
Second.
A second of Jim. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anybody opposed? No, five zero. Okay, now let's go down to number five.
Motion to take 3550 and 3552 Main Street off the table.
Second, someone?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Okay, discussion. Let me just state, I've been going to this, to the Tea House since it opened six years ago, so I think this is a good movement of a small business strengthening their core business, so I hope that everything we can do to help you guys move forward is possible. I think, I looked at the, I'm happy to see that you're expanding. I think that's a very brave move for you guys to do, and I now want to open it up for other conversations.
Mr. Chairman, I also, I agree. I agree with you. Growing a small business is hard. I'm a small business owner myself, so I can definitely understand. It's also scary, especially when you're expanding and trying new things to, you know, bring more patrons in, you know, just to bring more, even bring more, you know, finances in. And, you know, I'm, as a wine lover myself, you know, Sauvignon Blanc, if your money wants to give me a present. The commissioners, commissioners. But I think this would be a great idea. I think it would further bring along the green as a place to go for, you know, relaxation, you know, hanging out with some friends, and making it more entertaining in Stratford and something else to do, so. I definitely agree, and I wish you guys all the luck with this.
Any other comments?
Well, I would just say that I know that there are activities and events that occur in Paradise Green in the evenings, the gazebo and things like that, and.
I think gazebo and things like that, and, and for businesses to have an opportunity to, uh, serve the, the public, that might show up at those events, this is an opportunity for them to, to get, um, you know, another crack at those people, right, or to offer them something a little bit different. So I think that certainly is within our, um, you know, economic development to, to do what we can to be favorable to businesses in town, and, um, you know, the, this expansion seems like a, a wise choice to take advantage of that.
Any other discussion?
Oh, I just wanna, um, ask, 'cause I don't see anything derogatory or any kind of negative feedback from, uh, either Jay's office or, or any kind of, so basically, from, I'm, from this packet, there's, there's, they're all under, um, what's the word I'm looking for there? They're basically in, in compliance with everything they need to do, with the outs, outdoor dining, with the, uh, expansion.
Yes, and I, I, if I can comment, this is not, um, clear, but I understand that the town and economic development is looking at the back parking lot to try to optimize every parking space. I know that with the greenway coming now from Barnum up to, uh, Paradise, we're gonna be doing some of the same kinds of things. So, we want this area to be as alive as it can be. And there are still problems that are not this business's
Right.
primary concerns, it really is the town's concern that we optimize parking for that area as much as possible.
That's all for me.
Any other comments? Someone wanna make me a proposal? I mean, a, a motion?
Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, 3550, 3552 Main Street petition of Katerzina Lindenberg for the Class H beer and wine permit.
Anybody second that?
Second.
Jim? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So it's five zero. Thank you, guys. Good luck. Okay, we are now going to move on to our, uh, our regular agenda, other work. I need someone to give me a, a, um, motion to approve the minutes of July 13. Do we, well, Jay, these administrative ones, do we do, we do them coming up, right? Sorry.
So I know this, this gets confusing, but this, the reason why we do this is because of a judge's, uh, comment to us. Anytime we have an administrative, the main agenda, the public hearing agenda, we also advertise for any site plan reviews that we are doing, even though they're not part of the public hearing, they are listed in the correct order on our work agenda. So at this point, well, at this point, we'll work with the minutes, and all these items that we have here on the administrative, they're all listed in proper order on our work agenda. They're all on the work agenda.
Uh, my motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second, Jim?
Second.
All in favor?
Three, there's three of us.
Okay, and so, Chairman, we need your vote? Aye and aye. All right, let's, now then we want to administrative, uh, site plan review of 1796 Barnham Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Jay Abansky, Stratford Planning, uh, Office of Planning and Zoning. Uh, we had an administrative request for, uh, a recycling, a recycled clothing bin. Uh, you know, we get these applications time, from time to time. Uh, this application is for the property at 1796 Barnham Avenue. It's a Checkers food store, kind of like a little, um, food mart. Um, the applicant has requested to, uh, put the clo, the, the location of the bin along, uh, Van Rensselaer and Barnham Avenue, that corner, and it essentially would be taking up a parking space. You know, just from a historical perspective that I can give this commission, because I know, I'm not sure if this commission has had the opportunity to review any of the recycling, recycled clothing bin applications, you know, we've probably had five or six over the past, you know, seven years that I've been here. And, uh, we haven't had a commission approve one yet, for the reason being that there was almost all of the other locations in town, we had issues of trash and dumping, and dumping of materials that cannot act, that aren't clothes, there are TVs, um, you know, household goods, and, uh, I know the, the blight enforcement officer is constantly running around town trying to, uh, address them. So I just wanted to give you all that historical background. Oh, Mr. Chairman, earlier this, uh, year, this legislative session, we, um, had a proposal further down Barnham Avenue for, for a similar, you know, and, and for the reasons that Mr. Abansky stated, we, we rejected that proposal. The only thing I would suggest, if we consider this, would be on the condition that somebody monitor and cleared it out every five days or something like that. We made a condition that that had to be, for, for the reason that, you know, it does turn into a, a place where a lot of inappropriate and, um, non-compliant stuff, I suppose, ends up getting put there. But, you know, your point is well taken, that Barnham Avenue is a place where we're trying to encourage business. And, um, this is not appropriate for, for, for that goal.
Uh, yes, I actually, uh, agree with, uh, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vigliotti, I mean, that, that's a main route to, from Orange coming through all the way to Bridgeport to Fairfield. So if, if people from other towns are coming here to enjoy some of the new establishments that we, establishments we might have on Barnham Ave, and to see that, and I, I don't feel too positive, just for the simple fact that I see the bin that's over at Home Depot, 'cause I'm there a lot, um, and that bin, you don't just see clothes, I mean, like, like you said before, I see TVs there. Like, um, just random, you know, just rubbish, uh, just piling around there. And they usually take care of it pretty good, but there's times where it's just a hot mess. And I, I would hate, hate for that to be, uh, a sight seen by people visiting Stratford on Barnham Ave, which is pretty busy. So I'm reluctant also to kinda approve this one, just for, you know, the, the past, the past experiences I've had with those bins also.
I drive down Barnham Avenue every day, from Main Street to the Bridgeport line. And, um, there's a lot of trash issues on Barnham Avenue, not only, so, I don't think we should add to it. I think we should, you know, it, it's not necessary.
Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, I, I concur, and Mr. Abansky is correct that, um, you know, in the last few years, we have denied these particular petitions. There was one, I believe, for Stratford Square that, uh, I think we had, we had received late in, in my last term. So, you know, there's, there's, there are ways that people who wanna donate clothing can do it. But especially in a high visibility area, it would seem inappropriate. So I, I think it'd be wise for this commission to follow suit and deny it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, due to the fact that, uh, there's, um, it does not seem to be appropriate or, um, uh, a glaring need, uh, it does not comply with the plan of conservation and development and what the, uh, town of Stratford is hoping to, um, establish on Barnham Avenue. I make a motion to deny this, um, request.
Second, anybody?
Second.
Aye.
Okay, now, with the next one, the Can Cider? Yes, we are. We're going to the Can Cider Land Review, but the first, we should obviously not on the 19th of January. That's a comeback, we'll start later at some point in the future. But we will be going to the 6900 Main Street, which is, it's Sikorski Land, and Stratford, if you don't remember. This giant pile of I guess if you're building other cockpits, you'll need to carry your person around, you make sure you have that all the information.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm happy to explain, explain a little bit of what's going on here, so. Uh, the applicant, Sikorski Aircraft, representing Sikorski Aircraft, uh, is intending to construct a two, two-story, 7,500 square foot building, um, which is to test blade balance. And essentially, that's what the world, the world stand is to do, I think they're running tests on helicopter blades. Um, so, and then there's incidental little, you know, incidental rooms as part of this, uh, this building. Uh, this application was referred to the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, uh, for their review. We did, as well as the other staff departments. We received some comments, first from John Casey, the Stratford Town Engineer, in a memo dated, uh, August 12th, 2022. Dear Jay, it would appear that the site is located adjacent to the flood zone with the base flood elevation of 14. The site grading shows regrading, uh, to a mean elevation of 13 to 14 feet, with a sanitary pump station at less than 14 feet. If this is subject to flooding, the pump station and any associated connections should be set above the elevation 14 or waterproof so that no floodwater can enter the sanitary system. There's that comment to consider, and then Sure.
So, is that the, the station that we just renovated, that we just renovated?
You know, I'm not sure, that was a, uh, Public Works Department project, I know that they were We've done several over the past year. Um, so, uh, this certainly could have been one, one of those locations. But I know our town engineer is certainly keyed into those, and project manager for those projects. So any recommendations that he is providing to us, I would strongly recommend as a condition of approval. Um, that the, let's see, the site is 14, um, with the sanitary pump station at less than 14. So if there's flooding, there could be issues, so that, uh, any connections to the pump station, what he's recommending is that any connections be set above elevation 14 or waterproofed. So those are the recommendations that I would recommend this commission attach as a condition.
So is saying that connections on the Sikorski building needs to be higher than our pump station?
Correct.
So that it's all downfield, even in a flooding situation?
Correct.
And essentially, he's saying that will, that will protect us in the future?
Essentially, make sure the pump station is working.
And is Sikorski moving with this?
Uh, you know, I'm not too sure what conversations John Casey has had with the, uh, with the applicant. Um, you know, it's the applicant's responsibility to make sure that they're checking the file before the hearing, to make sure that, you know, if they've got any concerns, they can reach out to that department. What I would say is, you know, if this commission is comfortable approving this application with certain conditions, and if they're unable to, they're unable to meet one of those conditions, or they say, hey, hold on a second, there's some confusion, they can always come back administratively, we don't have to advertise, and, uh, with an explanation as to either why they couldn't meet that condition, and you all could rescind that, so. That would be my recommendation. And what I would say is, and, and another way you can condition it is just say, all recommendations provided by the town engineer in his memo to the Office of Planning and Zoning on August 12th shall be strictly followed. And then I'll, I'll get August 12th. And I'll make sure the, all those details get, get in there.
Jay, there's one other, something that we had discussed earlier, is the M
MS-4.
The MS-4.
Yep.
But MS-4 is that all water alcohol from the site is contained within the site. Now, their building is such an environment for sensitive and you make sure that the water that comes back to the elevated, off that site is not going to actually create one of the problems we have, which is pollution that goes down to where now pollution comes. So, I, I cannot imagine, of course, they're good neighbors. I can't imagine if they look at this and say, you know, okay. But I think it needs to be included, that, that, that the MS-4 requirements, that they need to show us that they're Is that enough, that statement's included?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman, and, and if you're looking for somewhere to read that, I have that on my staff comments as a condition, suggested condition of approval, it's listed as number one. That's okay. No, you, you, you essentially, you, you, you got it. And so the third, the third set of feedback that, uh, that we've received, and this was from the Department of Energy and Environmental Protection, in a memo dated, hmm, August 22nd, 2022, um, we received a, you know, 20-page document of which most of, most of, most of which is a checklist and then some template, you know, what are water-dependent uses, what are definitions of what are, what's at the property. Uh, this, this set of staff comments should be in all of your packets, and I think the keys to what their feedback are, are on page five, and, um, I will quickly read through their three, three comments for you all to consider to attach as a conditions of approval. The department recommends that the coastal forest buffer area adjacent to the tidal wetland be supplanted and remaining vegetation protected to the furthest extent possible. To mitigate the loss of any coastal forest areas with trees already removed, the significant impervious area at this facility overall, we recommend native, non-invasive species to be replanted along the slope of water-facing berm and/or elsewhere where practical and available on-site, and that the conservation, a conservationism be considered to retain, uh, retain and improve the riparian buffer area along the tidal wetlands in perpetuity, and record it as such on the land records. Number two. Additionally, the department recommends that the retention pond be turned into a bioswale, which includes planting appropriate non, uh, native, non-invasive species, I'm sorry, native, non-invasive plants and shrubs to stabilize the embankments and to protect water quality. Also, provide details on how the hill to be removed while fully minimizing sedimentation and erosion impacts, as well as composition of the hill to be removed should be specified. Uh, finally, number three. As this property is water, is a waterfront site and therefore subject to CCMA, water-dependent use criteria whereby commissions apply priority consideration to protect and enhance such use to protect and enhance such uses, including public access, the commission may wish to apply such standards per the coastal site plan review process. One suggestion includes appropriate off-site public access improvements that the commission and applicant agree to improve, including all design detail, public easement, public access signage, and parking in perpetuity. You know, I think that last one might be a bit difficult to manage without any detail or, I mean, we received these comments two days ago.
This came from you?
Yeah. So, I mean, there's been virtually zero time to coordinate any, any meetings about public access and, you know, what I would say is that that could, that third one could be made as less of a condition of approval and more of a suggestion for, of dialogue between the office and the applicant. And that's all I have for the commission regarding this.
On the greenway, I just did a right by up over the Sikorsky Bridge and along that path, it's a new, new, a bit of marshland. The, my suggestion would be that they include, that they put in a level of tree screening, particularly that would cover just the lower side of it, so that the view on the Sikorsky Greenway, it doesn't maintain, that they create, it's a two-story building, they can put in the local mangels that go somewhere, the south end of the property and the western side of the property, as part of screening, without disrupting the view, and that partly address what the D E P was suggesting.
So to, to plant a row of native shade trees, to provide additional...
Screening of...
Vegetative buffering?
Anybody who's walked up there should know that that area, what you get up onto the Sikorsky Greenway, it really is a very natural-looking spot. So if this building is standing out alone, but it's growing, it's going to stick out. So that's just my suggestion, those three points, the MS-4, the first point that you made, and then the tree screening and line ones, what the D E P was asking for.
Yes. So, point of clarification, this is on the Sikorsky, adjacent to the Sikorsky Plant?
Yes.
So it's a new building. You know, my, I mean, I live there, so, you know, I pass it every day. There are, like, vacant parking lots and lots of buildings that, you know, to me, I don't know what they have there, but, and another thing is, because they're government contractors, they're very strict about a lot of stuff that they do, because actually, the company I work for produces wire that Sikorsky is the end user for. So I, you know, we know that they're very, very strict. So is, is that the only place? I mean, I don't understand, or, you know...
My assumption, if they're testing rotor blades, they essentially have to make it in the tunnel, you can imagine.
Right, right.
That's my assumption, they don't want it to be, that has to go somewhere.
Yeah.
Of course, that area, that area, and actually, I assume it's a go-up, which is a critical for us.
Yeah.
But that's just my assumption, that, that's a contract.
Yeah.
Listen, Sikorsky has always been our best employer, our best neighbor, doing what they're doing. So I feel like if we simply give them suggestions, and say, yes, they're on the order, which is very thorough, it's not too much to ask for three things.
Yeah, no, no.
If we're trying to do, and allow, remember, Sikorsky's not the largest rotor company in the world, the year, so that's what is attractive for years to come. But we've got experience with big companies, fully, and that's what we need to, you mind I clarify? I didn't mean to shut it right there. Any other questions, Jim?
I'm ready to end discussion and make a motion to approve.
Chris, any discussion?
I've just been trying to go through the... I've been trying to go through the, both the PDF and the paper copies. So this, is this on the north end of the property, or it's actually, it's closer to the bridge?
It's actually down in the mud flats.
It's in the mud flats?
It's down where it drops down.
Oh, okay.
They want to trim out part of that hill.
Yeah.
That's on the eastern edge of the mountain.
Yeah. Well, just echoing what Commissioner Lamberty said, is, you know, obviously, if there's any, you know, public access and defense development plant concerns, obviously, you know, I think we'll, we'll make sure our motion gives the chair, the administrator enough leeway to, to work that out between the two of, between both parties there. So I'm ready to support it, too, ready to move forward.
Deion? Okay, Jim?
Mr. Chairman, concerning 6900 Main Street petition of Dennis Gonzalez seeking a coastal site plan review to construct a 7,500-square-foot, two-story building and blade balance stand incidental to an aerospace manufacturer in an MA zone, I make a favorable recommend, or I vote that we should approve it, or I'm proposing that we approve it with the conditions that it meets the recommendations of the town engineer and the Department of Energy...
The town engineer, particularly...
Particularly...
In terms of the sewer element?
Well, recommendations provided by the town engineer to the Office of Planning and Zoning on August 12th. Those must be adhered to.
That's one.
That's one, that the MS-4 stormwater permit and that all those conditions are met.
For water outflows off the property.
For water outflows off the property, and also for the recommendations of deep, particularly recommendations number one and two.
And...
Oh, and the trees, native shade trees to act as a visual buffer to the building.
Have we covered enough of that?
That's perfect, we got them all.
All right, any discussion on that?
Oh, yes, I second that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Five, five zero. Okay, now we're going down to the accessory department, that's the petition.
Nothing this month.
Seven, bro, control.
Yes, just give me one, just give me one moment while I finish this note. Okay. Okay, so the Office of Planning and Zoning recommends that, you know, should the commission choose to approve the coastal site plan review, which you all have done, the office recommends the standard for, conditions of approval for an erosion and sediment control, which I have listed in my comments, one being that it comply with this town's MS-4 stormwater permit. All necessary celtation and erosion controls shall be in place and the zoning enforcement officer notified for an inspection prior to any site work and construction being performed. And any immediate onsite modification shall be employed when an erosion problem develops. And number four, in evaluating this application, the commission has relied on the information provided by the applicant, and if such information subsequently proves to be inaccurate or incomplete, this approval may be modified, suspended, or rescinded. And I'll just add that the applicant is quite organized whenever, whenever they are preparing to do work and an erosion and sediment control application is required, they are always calling our staff, letting them know it's ready to be inspected, which not everybody always does. So we recommend that these four standard conditions of approval be attached and the erosion and sediment control review be approved.
May I ask you one question?
Sure.
May I ask you another question? Is Sikorsky on our sewer system?
No, I believe they have their own...
They have their own...
They have their own wastewater treatment, their own water treatment system.
Okay.
That's not to say that it's, maybe there are some portions that might be connected to the town. I do know that maybe five years ago, this commit, the zoning commission approved a wastewater treatment facility on-site. So I do know that they do treat some, if not all, of their water on-site, but historically, I couldn't tell you for certain.
Okay. And if we end up with a situation where coming, going down the road, what they've done on the property begins to impact our existing pumping station, should we put anything in there to protect ourselves?
No, I, what I would say is that we have the zoning regulations. If there are other issues or violations to the zoning regulations, or maybe something that has to do with our MS-4 stormwater permit, there are mechanisms to allow us to enforce that. I wouldn't...
So you could enforce that basically through MS-4?
I wouldn't confuse it with...
Okay, then, then we're okay. So basically, we're taking Jay's recommendation page, and that is what, what we're doing for this. May I have a, well, discussions, anybody?
Mr. Chairman, it just makes sense to me that if we approve the CAM site review, that we should approve the sediment erosion control as well.
Okay, will someone give me a...
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve 6900 Main Street sediment erosion control application, provided it meets the standard conditions for approval as outlined by Mr. Urbansky.
Well, it's not Casey, it's, is it Casey's letter that we're, is it, or is, it's Jay's?
Yeah, Jay.
Oh, sorry, I thought, I thought you said Casey. My apologies. It's getting late for me. All right, so we're ready to vote. Second that. Chris seconds that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, five zero. Okay, the next thing, zoning enforcement, anything, Jay?
Mr. Chairman, we've got, I, our office has nothing, no.
Other items? Goal settings? I just want to make one comment. The beginning of November, we are doing a joint present, we're, we're doing a joint meeting with planning, zoning, ourselves, and I think, I believe, two other town departments or town committees, which we are going to be getting a presentation of the parameters of zoning changes that are going to happen for the new P O C D. Now, those have to happen before we rewrite the P O C D, so it's really critical, but it's some of the things that we've been talking about as long as I've been around here, and so...
Is that the Zoom meeting on November 7?
That's the Zoom meeting on November 7th. So please make sure that you guys are there and be active participants in terms of asking questions, because they're essentially going to be presenting us what they have done in terms of their blocking out, where we need zone changes. But the ideas that you come up with are going to be, have real impact on what they're proposing for us, so think, think hard on it if you can. Look at the P O C D in advance. Did you have something to say?
I did, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just wanted to add that I agree and I encourage everyone who's available that day during lunch to try to attend. You know, there's going to be a lot of other opportunities, but this is really your opportunity with your other land use board commissioners here in town to speak up about land use changes, zone changes, text amendments, things that you need to want to see changed, not only in the P O C D, but in the zoning regulations, because we're going to take that information and go out to bid with that as we change our zoning regs. So not that you need to come with an exhaustive list, but good to go attend, to listen and either give feedback at that meeting or give it back to me to relay back to our consultant team in the future. So, yeah, we hopefully, hopefully you guys can attend.
Go online and spend some time looking at the P O C D as it exists now, particularly at where it talks about what zoning changes need to be considered. We're talking a P O C D that's 10 years old now, but there were, there are suggestions of where we should have changed. Some places we have, and some places we still have yet to, to make a dent. So like, I know Chris and I worked really hard on our housing partnership, we're going to be doing a meeting with them, Housing Partnership is returning just for a meeting with them when they start working on, on those regulations, but it's really critical. This is the next 10 years of Stratford, so if there's a reason for you to be here, that's it. I think that's the end of our, our agenda. Our next meeting is 7:00 PM Wednesday, September 14th, and our public hearing date is Wednesday, September the 28th. Remember that first one or that second one will only exist if we have work on the agenda. So be ready for either, but one or both of them. I think we're going to start getting very busy, so enjoy your last two weeks of summer.
Two weeks, yes.
And thank you. Will someone give me a...
Mr. Chairman, seeing no other items on our work agenda, I make a motion to close.
Can we say thank you to Chris for stepping in tonight? Welcome back, Deion. I hereby, all in favor?
Wait a minute, a second.
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay, now, now...
Uh, what?
Now you can say all in favor.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, guys. See you soon.